Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for May 18th, Anniversary of St. Helen's Eruption, for those of you who remember.
We're alive.
I was, I know the Spokane--
This board were not alive at that time.
You were not alive, really?
Yeah.
I can't even talk here.
I, although--
He wasn't even born in the same decade.
It's true, a 90s baby.
All right. I was only a few miles away while it was blowing up. Count out a church and it was right above us, but the wind was blowing Spokane's way. So I didn't, I didn't get a thing. But it is always a good reminder that despite all our aspirations and efforts, we're not really in charge of anything. So, but we have oversight on the budget.
Yeah, you have oversight on money.
And we do have to do that. And so as part of the long-term efforts of the Spokane City Council to really get information and do our constitutional duty on the finances of the city, you know, we passed some ordinances requiring reporting and more information. And we are now doing a mid-year budget review to see what adjustments need to be made to make sure that we don't have to make precipitous decisions near the end of the year or for the next year's budget. And so towards that end, the City Council's Budget Director, Matt Boston, is going to make some presentations and entertain questions and council discussion, both from the end of 2022 numbers that we have, 2023 to date, and kind of looking forward. And beyond just this study session, he's going to talk about other study sessions. So is that, oh.
So did we invite any administration to?
Not, not for today, no.
Not for today?
No.
Okay. I just don't want to remind everybody to, while back we had Gavin Cooley in here talking about the budget process and how important it was for transparency on the administration side, and we have not seen that, and that's very disappointing. So I'm hopeful that going forward, perhaps that will change because we can't continue on this way. I'm grateful to you for presenting today.
Thank you. Katsmer Bingle.
But we didn't invite them, right?
For this session. We invited other sessions that, yeah.
Okay.
We had a canceled study session.
Yeah.
That they declined to attend.
Yeah. But this really, I mean, we can get into finger pointing. That's not really the point of today's meeting. The point is where are we really and where are we going and what adjustments do we need to make?
Correct. And I, and I think there's going to be more opportunity to extend invitations to the administration. I think we need to, I mean, the point of this is to, today at least, to look high level and then start to narrow in our focus based on what we're seeing. As Council President, excuse me, was saying, we're starting this study session, but we have a series of study sessions, really financial, economic focused over the next month and a half. We're having another discussion next Thursday. I believe the administration has been invited. I don't quite know the answer to--
We invited the mayor, and I heard that she's not coming, but maybe she still can.
So we, I mean, we can, that's part of this discussion. As I, as I have my conversations, I have them with the specific budget work group, which is Council President, Council Member Wilkerson, who's the Finance Chair, and the Vice Chair, Council Member Cathcart. So this is to put it into broader context, to have everybody on the same page of what we are talking about. So some of the information is going to be a little bit redundant for some of the members that, that are hearing this, but some might have some more questions and we can kind of hone in what our schedule is going to be moving forward. That said, let's get started. So overall today, what we're going to talk about is we're going to talk about where we ended from my perspective on 2022, some of the key components to that 2022 landing, as well as kind of where we're tracking for 2023. Just as a reminder, we had, you know, the significant impacts to our 2022 fiscal year is that we did contribute over $31 million, coming back to the city of Spokane in some way, shape, or form, a lot of that impacting the general fund. Some of those key factors is we funded $6.2 million in public safety overtime. That was split between both police and fire. We spent $6 million in public safety vehicle purchases dedicated for 2022. We spent $4 million, or we allocated $4 million in homelessness operations and capital, of which is currently being slated for a spend in 2023. We spent $2 million in our collective bargaining agreements, which was $2,000 add to pays for local 270 to not only recruit but retain employees. And then we had $4 million coming back for utility assistance, so going out to, going out to individuals within the community, but invariably coming back at the end of the day. Secondarily, we spent a lot of our unallocated reserves, and this is, I think, one of the main drivers why the reserve ordinance and some of the other ordinances that have been thrown out there are in place at this point in time, is the concern of how much we are spending of our reserves. We'll touch a little bit more on it moving forward, but again, when we're talking about being over or under budget, remember these numbers come back into our budget. So while our initial budget might be $220 million, just using rough numbers, adding $15 million and coming under at, at, you know, $235 million still is over budget $15 million. We've just supplanted one-time money, which is problematic because as our, one of our guiding budget principles is not using one-time funds for ongoing expenses, something that we are doing in an alarming rate from, from my perspective. So again, some of the key factors here, $850,000 went for M&amp;P retro pay. Again, that was a collective bargaining issue. Same with police retro pay. Police was just identified for the 2022 fiscal year, so there wasn't prior years added to it. $7.5 million in fire retro pay, $1.2 million in local 270 retro pay. And then again, remember, council approved $3.1 million in police capital to be funded for purchase-ahead vehicles for 2023.
Can we ask, do you want us to ask questions as we go?
Fire away. This is your discussion.
Okay. So in the past, excuse me, and I've asked this before, there's cobwebs here. Who cleans this place? In the past, we've put, when we know that there's going to be retro pay, when we know that we're going to have an open contract, we've set money aside. Where have we put that money in the past? I don't think it's been in unallocated reserves. I think it's set aside somewhere else so that we're not counting it as reserves and then taking it out and going, oh, oops.
Yeah, there's, there's two, well, I think two main forms of thought. If, if you put it in unallocated reserves, it doesn't necessarily earmark it for a collective bargaining unit. It doesn't, it doesn't have a collective bargaining unit that's currently under negotiation say, hey, that's mine, that's our bar, that's what we're going for. That's, that's the, that's the, of the mindset of putting it in unallocated reserves. Putting it in a specific account for that year is something that has been done in the past where it's saying, okay, we're, we're essentially setting this aside in this year, knowing that this bargaining unit or bargaining units are going to be finishing up their negotiations this year, and there's probably going to be some degree of back pay to it. We tried to do that in 2021, knowing that we had a significant, meaning council, knowing that council knew a significant amount of bargaining units were either expiring or expired. There was a strong push from council to get administration to set aside some of that money. And we'll talk about this in a little bit, but primarily not only because of the fact that we knew these bargaining units were, we knew these bargaining agreements were expiring, but we also knew that our sales tax at that point in time was at a, at a high rate. We were, we were incurring a lot of sales tax directly attributable to the reopening of the market as well as inflation. At the end of the day, I mean, inflation helps local government when prices are going up, we receive more. We know that there's going to be a bump, but we have to hold on to that money at that point in time. We, I think at the end of the day, we're able to negotiate around 1.6 going into the 2022 budget, saying that we needed nine. I think the, if I recall correctly, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me if you remember differently, but I think that the request was to have individual departments come to council and, and talk to council about where they could make those cuts during that time, because knowing we had to reduce those costs, the ongoing costs, so that we could save some of that money. But I don't think that ever came to fruition.
Didn't.
Answer that question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So when we're looking back at 2022 and, and we see that, you know, I believe the administration's, the administration has, has said that there is a $5.1 million surplus from the 2022 budget, meaning revenues were higher than expenditures for, for 2022. That takes into account the roughly $19 million or so that was implanted into the budget from 2022. Now, 4.3 or 4.6 of that is the incumbent, encumbrance carryover, of which we do every single year. It's kind of saying, okay, we're, we've got these agreements, contracts, what have you, that we, we didn't spend in, in the prior year. We want to move them into our next year so that we make good on our, our promises or agreements. So that was the 4.6. But again, going back to the roughly $14 million that we committed one-time funds, that, that $5 million surplus realistically, once we, once we take that out, is, is more, is, is probably closer to a $9 million deficit if you were to, if you were to look at it from a purely financial component of your year revenues and your year's expenses. So having said that, some of the questions, you know, where, where, where did we go over? Where did, where were we seeing those big, those big variances? On the, the column right there on the, on the first table above, you see the initial budget. That's what we passed back in 2021 for the 2022 budget. We see that $73.4 million went into salaries, yet we spent 78.56. Again, some of it retro pay. So the $5 million variance there shows us that, you know, we, we had to capture that money to pay that, those funds out. Benefits, this is primarily because of the staffing shortage that we saw during 2022. Invariably, you're going to capture benefits savings when you are paying your, your, your employees overtime. So when you play, pay your employees overtime, you're, you're not having to pay medical, retirement, et cetera, for several different employees, so you're going to capture some savings there. Services, again, I know Tanya Wallace spoke briefly about the services, but that's, that's that outsourcing. So I mean, you kind of mash those two benefits and services together, and you realize that, you know, the service, the higher services that we were paying for was probably because of the vacancies that we have or a significant component to it. Operating transfers was going to be the big one, the $10.5 million over our original budget. And then again, down below shows kind of the detail of that. Where did that come from? $7.6 million being for a transfer to the fire EMS fund. That's for the retro pay for local 29. They were, they were several years expired, so we had a larger payment for them. And then the $3.1 million for police vehicles. I've had a couple of questions been asked to me about our general fund reserve balance, specifically because of the ordinance and specifically because of the, the overall direction that we're going and what that says to the public. This is a five-year look at what our, our general fund reserve balance has been for unallocated over the past five years. As you could see in year five, which is 2023, the beginning of 2023, if you include unrealized gains and losses, we are at a deficit, a negative $9.2 million number. If you take that out, we end up being a positive about $7 million. There's, again, two schools of thought. You know, there is, hey, that, you know, the unrealized gains and losses is, is somewhat of funny money at that point in time because we're, we're going to capture those gains. But then there's the other school of thought of looking at your true checkbook balance of saying, what is in my account right now? If I had to have a fire sale and something emergent happened, what would I have in my checking account that I could spend if my family was in a disaster? And that's where we're at, is that negative number. So if we had to go liquid, that's where we would be. Again, you can see a pretty rapid decline over the past five years. And, you know, a lot of people, well, I'll go to that here in a second, but to, to get a closer look of where we're at for 2023, this, this kind of captures the, the visual of what I'm talking about. So on the left, we see the, the current general fund balances. We know that the contingent and the revenue stabilization are targeted for 10% of current year expenses for contingent, 3.5% of current year revenues. Right now, we have $21 million in contingent, $7 million in revenue stabilization. Those have not been adjusted at all in the current year. Realistically, what they should be if they were at their appropriate funding level is $22.8 million and $8 million. So we're $1.8 million below our targeted funding level for our contingent funding and $650,000 below our revenue stabilization targeted funding. That isn't a problem in it of itself, but when we look at the overall general fund expenditures, now you've heard me saying that 15% of, of your, of your fund, or you should have a minimum reserve balance of, at the very least, 15%. And while that is like absolute crisis mode, I think the, the other municipalities, some of the other municipalities that I showed last year around the same time, show a much higher, show several months, show 25%, show 20%. If you look at our general fund expenditures, our general fund, our general fund, our general fund reserve, overall, it's at $19.18, $19.18 million, including the unallocated, or excluding the, sorry, including the unearned gains and losses. So that's at 8.33% if, if we're looking at that. So just, just let that number sink in for a second. And then if you take out the unrealized gains and losses, so you add back the loss that's there, you're only at 15.74%. GFOA, which is the Government Financial Officers Association, states, and I know Tanya Wallace had, had leaned on this one last year, that at a minimum, that general purpose governments, regardless of size, maintain unrestricted budgetary fund balance in their general fund of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues or regular general fund operating expenditures. If we were to take that, that, that is 16.67%. So if you look at it with unrealized gains and losses, we're below. Without, we're still below. If you look at our SMC, we're supposed to have a 25%, a 25% reserve balance. On the far right, you can see that we are $50 million behind what our targeted reserve balance should be based on what is in our ordinances currently. A lot of people are saying that, I, I know a lot of the, the conversation and the, the discussion is that we are behind and we're burning through our, our reserves because of the fact of the pandemic. Now, yes, while it did have an impact, I wanted to show, and Tanya Wallace did mention this on Monday during her presentation at the Finance Committee, that, that sales taxes is one of the greatest identifiers of what is going on with our current economy. This, this shows from the last true recession, which was the 2007, 2008. The blue line there is the actual change of what we had versus the red line, which is a 3% growth model before that actual recession hit. So if you can see on the far right, that, that blue line that's skyrocketing above, you're seeing that those, that year-over-year sales tax growth was over 20% in 2021 and still pretty substantial in 2022. So to say that, you know, we're, we're doing it and this is because of the, the, the current state of, we're trying to recover from the pandemic. We need to, from my opinion, stop using that argument because we have recovered from the pandemic from a financial spend of 3%. Even if you were to look at 3% from two, or 4% from 2018 to 202022, we are still above that number. Yes?
There is a difference in 2008 and today, though, right? Because in 2008, inflation in that area actually started to be negative.
Right.
Because we were in a recession. Inflation today is, you know-- Because we were in a recession. Inflation today is, you know, has been 10%, right? And so when we're talking about sales tax numbers going up and those kinds of things, there is a direct correlation to the response from the government in when it comes to the pandemic.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you agree when it comes to these numbers being affected by the pandemic?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, so just like I said earlier, so inflation, as as tough as it is to swallow, inflation directly benefits local municipalities in the forms of sales tax. So when we when we have those higher expenses, we are, we are getting the benefit of it. But that is when local municipalities need to stop there for a second and say, okay, we see this spike. We know that it's going to flatline soon thereafter. We have to hold on to that spike as it is right now because we know that this is going to flatten back out. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. No, I get it. I just, when we're when we're talking about these, I think there's, there's a pretty big difference in the response in 2008 versus the response in, you know.
Right.
The pandemic.
And this, this, this visual wasn't to necessarily say, okay, look, we've done, we've done better than 2007, 2008. It's just to say, okay, look from a, from just a purely graphic component of 2007 to 202022. If you were to say, okay, at 3%, 3% growth, which is the the standard number that we throw around all the time, at 3% growth, we would be well short of where we're at from a sales tax number than if we were to, you know, if if we were to just maintain on that 3% growth, we would be well underneath that. So if we're saying that we're budgeting and saving at the 3 or 3.5% growth on sales tax, we need to, we need to be conscious of that and not spend to where our sales tax numbers end in a current given year because of exactly what you're saying, because of that spike in inflation.
I see your point on on where we're budgeting. I think our expenses are probably going up commensurately with that number because, again, everything got 9%, 10% more expensive as we were going along. And so, well, yeah, we're bringing in a ton more money. Everything costs a ton more.
Yeah. I mean, the problem is, is this is just a small, small fraction of a component of our, well, not a small, small fraction. This is roughly 25% of, you know, our our overall general fund revenue that we're bringing in. So once you start flatlining all the other things that are staying stagnant against this number, you have to, and exactly why we're here, you have to start right sizing your number to say, okay, what can we afford on the long term here? Because everything is more expensive. How do how do we rightsize our current organization? Because quite frankly, this local governments are are the most predictable forms of business out there. You know what levers to push that that are going to generate more revenue. You know what your revenue numbers or have a really good idea of what your revenue numbers are going to be if you don't pull any of those numbers. Likewise, you know what your expenditures are going to be because they're primarily personnel-heavy. So having said that, you have to say, okay, with with all of those, with all of those factors into play, how do I rightsize my expenditure so that I'm not, again, going into 16 or $14 million into my reserve, my reserve savings every single year? I mean, if you were to draw a parallel to a personal finance, it would, you would do the same thing. You would say, okay, I'd have to, my household has to reduce its expenditures because I can't keep dipping into my 401K because at some point I will not have any more 401K, and then I'll start borrowing money. So that's pretty much where we're going to end the 2022 discussion unless there's other other questions that are out there. So other questions about reserve balances, where we ended, I think everybody kind of knows that, and we've talked about it for the past 12 months.
Yeah, Matt, just a question about that graph that you showed for the the unallocated reserves. Yeah. That's unrealized reserve balance for each of those years? Or is it just the current with unrealized?
So that's unallocated. That that is what will be reported on your financial statements as unallocated reserve balance. So drawing a parallel to a a for-profit entity, right? That's your retained earnings. That's your retained earnings against everything else. So.
But his question, his question is, does that for each year include the unrealized gains and losses?
Yes, that it always includes unrealized gains and losses.
So there's always about.
So it's comparative.
Okay.
And it's not always the same. Sometimes there's a gain, sometimes there's a loss. And I can get those numbers excluding that if if that's something that you want.
Yeah. And I think I'd be curious in that, too, because like on our, in our pension, our net pension liability went from $155 million last year to $256 million this year. We had $100 million change in that because of our unrealized losses. And so I would be curious to know what it what it looks like, you know, without that number.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're both important. I just.
Right, right, right. Yeah. I mean, from a, I mean, from a a bond look or an investor look, that's that's normally going to be, I mean, that's that bottom line number that you're going to be looking at to say, okay, you know, is that, you know, is that something that's their kind of financial position? Of course, this does not include the contingent and revenue stabilization. But again, remember, those are restricted by SMC and can only be spent if there's, you know, an emergent unforeseen circumstance. So those, those are really kind of out of the picture of that. And again, that 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 number of 1.8 and 647, I mean, those are both underfunded for those overall contingent and revenue stabilization kind of emergency set of reserves.
Yeah. Just to follow up on that, for 2023.
Yeah.
Is a large part of that decreased due to more unrealized losses? Or is it more spending related?
There's a, there's a much larger unrealized gain or loss, I'm sorry, in 2023 than there was previously.
Any idea?
It's just, it's the timing of the investments. It's, I mean, really, it's the, it's the interest rate against the timing of the investments. It's your time value of money. But it, I mean, it's, again, it's nothing to be extremely alarmed about unless you're saying, okay, I'm looking at my checkbook balance. And if you're looking at your checkbook balance and you pull out unrealized gains and losses, and you pull out, you you pull out and add back in accounts receivable and accounts payable, you get to a point where you say, okay, this, this is what I have available to me right now to spend if there's an absolute emergency.
And does our ordinance address the unrealized part of it? Like our minimum?
It's, it's, it's net. So the 25% is a net of all of them together. So the 25% is really, from what I've seen, best practice from municipalities that are out there saying, okay, yeah, you know, while while 16.67 is is bare bones minimum, 25% is is really where you should be.
After accounting for unrealized losses.
No, excluding that, excluding that. Yeah, excluding that.
Sorry, a couple.
Go ahead.
So a couple more questions. So what unrealized losses are we having in that, in that contingent reserve account? I is, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm wrong. I was just thinking it was kind of like a savings.
No, no, no. So it's, so it's not specific in contingent. So the contingent and the revenue stabilization are numbers that we essentially set aside on the books. And and the way that the SMC is written is that it says, if your, if your revenues are higher than your expenses, you can adjust it for the upcoming year, right? So there's no, there's no gains or losses that are specifically captured in that contingent or revenue stabilization line. That's an overall general fund investment balance number. So it's saying, okay, of your, of all of your your funds that are sitting in investment from the general fund, that's that nine point or that, well, $16 million number is is what the unrealized gain and losses.
So just to be clear, because he's talking to me about this, our investments are restricted as what we can invest in as a city.
Yes.
So we just can't go out.
We can't buy Apple or anything like that.
Yeah, we can't buy penny stocks. So but there was a loss in the market because most of us who conservative investors took a significant hit. So there is, even though it's in a savings account, we did take a hit. We did lose money, which was presented to us on.
We, but I'm in it, and I know none of us are really financial experts, but I think this is the thing. The kinds of investments we go are essentially bond-type funds that if you have to sell them today because the interest, it's not worth it. But if you wait till they mature, you don't realize it. That's really what we're talking about. So it's not really a loss. It's just a fire sale we had to do.
Yeah, no, I understand unrealized losses. I was just trying to figure out how those investments are our reserve account. I guess I didn't understand that was our reserve account.
It's not in a reserve account. It, for financial statement reporting purposes, it says, okay, tell us what your fund balance is. And that is an income, and I'm just using real general terms, that is an income statement line items to say, this is a loss from your investments if you were to sale, sell right now, right? So you have to put that on your income statement, which then flows into your balance sheet to say, okay, this is what you have available to you right now. It's not specifically in contingency or revenue stabilization. It says, okay, from your, your, your savings account that's left, after all of your losses that are out there, you net that to this, and that's what it makes. So it's, it's not.
Yeah. Like I said, I, I guess I don't understand how the account works. I understand the investment side of it. I understand that. I guess I don't understand, and we can talk more about the top line.
Yeah, yeah.
I have one more question before we move on. So on the, right here on your SMC guidelines, the 10%, the 3.5%, and the 25% there of expenses less above, that 25% is just straight 25%? And so I guess I'm not understanding the expenses less above. Would it not be?
So it's, so it's 25% of all expenses. So let's just say, again, using, using the the current, the current budget. Current budget is $238 million in expenses. 25% of that $238 million is $37.9 million.
Right.
You subtract, you subtract the eight, the the 22, and, or I'm sorry, you, the the $37.9 million is the, the net of 22.8 plus 8.01 plus 37.9 creates the 25%. So does that, so 25% of altogether is 68.864, right? 10% of $24 million is 24.
I got you. Okay, cool.
Times two is 48.
Yep, yep.
Right? So you got it?
Yep.
Okay. General Fund 2023 year-to-date as of 4/30. So I know Tanya had presented briefly on this. This is, you know, some of the things that I'm seeing as as it relates to kind of the red blinking screen alerts. The big one for me is is going to be the overall expenses right now, the way that I'm seeing, look to be about $6.8 million over budget if I were to project out what is happening so far. Now, again, I know Tanya had mentioned that, you know, everybody has their different forms of projecting. I will walk you through kind of really quick how I get to mine. I look at what our trend was prior year in terms of kind of saying, okay, here's the 12 months of spend, taking out the one-time, the one-time impacts is like collective bargaining, retro pays, or something like that, that have significant components to it. And then I try to kind of smooth it out for the year, saying, okay, that is the percentage that that should be spent per year. Right now, we only have four months, so it's, it's, it's not, you know, putting a thumb in the air and telling which way the wind blows, but it's, 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 it's less precise than it will be in two, three months. But as we're looking at trying to make strategic shifts, we've known that a lot of the, the ones that are going over budget, we've known that that was going to happen early on. Overtime was a big one for us in 2022 as well as 2021. We are trending the exact same way as it is in 2023. So therefore, knowing that we only have, knowing that we're upside down in our unallocated reserve balance, and knowing that all ARPA has been allocated except for, I believe, $600,000, we do not have a one-time money to pull from if it is truly, in fact, $6.8 million. Now, technically, could we go into a further deficit in our unallocated reserves? Yes, technically, legally, you can, but from an SMC side, you cannot because what we have done, or what council has done, is is put up those guardrails to say that you cannot keep on dipping into those unallocated reserves to put the Band-Aid on moving forward. So that said, I think is kind of the the main reason why we're here to discuss, what are we going to do for the remainder of the year, instead of having this conversation in November where we're trying to come up with the 6.5 or $6.8 million or wherever we land. Again, like I said, right now, seeing through January through April, that's a 6.5% growth from prior year. If I were to look at prior year's numbers, and I were to add 6.5% to those numbers, I would be at 6, $6.8 million. We know from just our, our bargaining agreements alone, everything else constant, that we are roughly within the 4% to 6% range of of our total cost of compensation year-over-year. So we know that those are going to be captured there. We know that we've budgeted for some of them, and we're burning through some of them that haven't quite, you know, the the contracts hasn't hasn't quite been finalized. And I'm sure you know which one I'm talking about. That said, the largest, the largest component of the overage that I'm seeing right now is $5.4 million over budget for salaries expense. I know from Tanya's presentation on Monday, she shows an annualized projection different to be $1 million for both salaries and wages, and I'll get to wage, or salaries, wages, and benefits. I'll get to benefits here in a second. But Jessica Stratton, her budget, her budget director also sent out a, a year-to-date budget variance report earlier that morning, earlier Monday morning, that said that year-to-date, our salaries expenses over $2.5 million in terms of the the net year-to-date, or roughly, I think it was maybe 2.4, is where they were at. So that means, and I've asked for the, I've asked to reconcile that, but that means if Jessica's is right currently, and Tanya's is going to be right by the end of the year, that means not only do we need to stop overspending, but we need to go into reverse and start saving, which the only way that I I can see that happening is by reduction, reduction of personnel costs. Yes?
That was going to be my question. Have we looked at, we have all these vacancies. Could you talk a little bit about not filling those vacancies and what kind of effect that would have? And then look at, as Councilmember Stratton mentioned, out-of-grade. So there's things there that we need to think about. And then, how do we get the departments to look at, here's, here's my bare bones, how I can actually operate and still serve the public?
Right.
So it's the structural gap. It just keeps rearing its head.
And out-of-grade has always been that gray area.
Yeah.
Can you put your mic a little closer? Out-of-grade has always been kind of that gray area.
Right. Yeah, because it's, right. And I will say, I mean, I know that was kind of a multifaceted question. The out-of-grade, yes, it is something that we need to look at. I haven't looked at it in the past couple of months. I'll be fully transparent. The last time that I looked at it, from the overall salary line item, it was pretty de minimis in terms of of the impact if you were to remove all out-of-grade at that point in time. That said, the, you know, the, the, the departments that we need to talk to about reducing the overall cost needs to happen pretty rapidly because those were, I mean, by the time we can actually do something, again, we're looking at July 10, and we'll talk a little bit about the timeline for an SBO to kind of right-size these, these personnel budget line items, and to, for them to change that within a short period of time. Now, I know you've said this over and over, we need to right-size the budget. But it's, it's going to be a quick change. It's going to be a quick change that is absolutely necessary, or from my point of view at least, or we are going to go over budget and we are going to be looking, scraping to look for funds to cover that deficit.
And and then talk about the the positions that have not been filled.
Oh, right, right, right.
And how those would affect if we don't.
Unfortunately, so we went, and I, I know I've talked to some people about this, but the Budget Office was very conscious in and deliberate in their contra salaries account. And I know I've talked to a lot of people about this on council, some more than others. But they bumped it up to a 4.5% contra account, which really captures a lot of the salary savings that were already incurring. As it relates to salary savings, we're not seeing a lot there because our contra, the contra account really right-sized the budget from the vacancy perspective. So even if you were to say, hey, I'm, I'm not going to hire any of the vacancies right now, you still don't save a lot of that money because of that contra account being already in place.
So for some departments, I just want to make sure I have this straight. For some departments, they're using salary savings to pad their budget, essentially. That's what I'm hearing from some.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I want to stay away.
I don't want to say pad.
Right, right. The, the, the way that, the way that the code is set up right now is a department can't necessarily over-budget for their salaries line. can't necessarily over-budget for their salaries line item and then spend more money in, say, supplies, or services for that matter. They have to bring that forward via an SBO, just like what we've seen with HR. So HR has a, a significant amount of salary savings, but those SBOs have always come to council to move the salary savings over to the services costs so that they can pay for those. It's, it's a safeguard that's there to, to do exactly what you're saying, is to say, okay, you can't inflate your budget and then buy 15 computers every single year.
Right.
It's, it's saying to move that, to move that salary savings over, you need to get approval from, from the council.
So two things on that.
Yeah.
I don't think that's happening with every department. We just kind of found out by accident, number one. And number two, it's not necessarily that they're inflating their budget, but they probably didn't budget enough in the beginning, so they're not hiring so that they can maintain a level of service.
I see. I see. I, I hope not. I, I, I mean, we could talk offline about that, but I, I don't know, I mean, from code, they, they are legally required to bring that forward to council.
Just one, one example, right, I think on Monday, we're actually voting on it, which is there's some salary savings from maybe CHHS, and they're going to put that into cubicles and desks. And so I, I think those sorts of, and I think municipal court had one similar last year as well.
Yep.
So those sorts of things are taking place.
Yep, yep. They, they come to you to say, okay, and, and, and those are the right questions that you need to be asking is like, you know, are we right-sized within your department? Are we having, when those come, when those sort of SBOs come to you, the, the questions that council need to be asking, needs to be asking is, are we, are we not getting somebody in, are we not getting individuals and folks into those spots to right-size your department? And are we suffering from a service perspective in your department if what we're doing is moving those personnel costs into a different line item within your budget?
Well, my concern is that those positions in those departments are empty, but we are contracting with outside services, consultants, temporaries, which is at sometimes double the cost if we actually had our own employee in that position. So, and that has been pretty prevalent through many departments over the last year.
Yeah.
Due to vacancies, so.
It's, it's a concern. I mean, it's, it's a double-edged sword, right? It's, you know, recruiting efforts are, are difficult all over, and there's no question about that. And I think, you know, the civil service process, as well as the hiring process with a union or, or just a local municipality period, is, is a lengthy one, and we know that. And something comes open, I, I think council needs to actively talk about what the solutions are if we know, and you've done this with police, for example. You knew that police was getting retirements every single year, so you put additional police positions within the budget, even though they're not budgeted for the year, the positions are there so that they can always actively recruit those, even if they're at their full staffing level. So it's, it's being conscious of the recruiting efforts that are out there, knowing that, hey, say if I have, you know, 10 utility workers and my attrition rate is two of those each year, it's coming to council and saying, can I put two utility workers in my, in my budget that aren't necessarily budgeted, they're just on the personnel side, so that I can actively be recruiting those and have a, a kind of an on-deck type list whenever I'm, whenever I'm needing it?
Are you, are you going to get to kind of an overall projection for the end of the year?
I'm, I'm going to, yes, but I'm, I'm not going to get into, my overall projection, really, at this point in time, is, is $6.8 million over budget for, for expenses. $5.4 million of that being over budget for salaries and wages. And then, again, this, this kind of, again, takes, takes you under my form of thought of how exactly I'm budgeting this. I know it's a ton of numbers, and I know it's really annoying to look at, but it shows, if you were to dispute this, prior years, just, just looking at the salary line item, prior year is 2022 on the far left. That shows $79 million of what we actually spent out the door. I, I think some things have changed, and I, I think it's roughly 78 millions, but it's, it's close enough. So say $79 million. Our current budget is $78.879 million. Right now, for the first four months, we have spent over $1.8 million from higher than last year. So if, if you were to take it as just basic numbers, that our budget is less than what we spent last year, and we have already spent $1.8 million over what we've spent last year, we know that we are trending in a direction that, that is going to be very, very difficult to, to reroute back into a positive direction where we're going to capture salary savings. I know, again, I know Jessica's showed a $2.4 million over budget, that's, that 1.8 number is not looking at, at the budget, it's just looking at over last year's numbers. Yeah.
So you, you're basically, your projection is based on if we were to take the current budget without any changes, right? I mean, that's, that's essentially what you're assuming. So, I mean, because obviously there's potential contracts coming forward, some other, some other things. Are those built into this?
So that's, that's the difficulty, right? So right now, we have saving, we have, we have a, a hypothetical salary increase built in with our budget for an expired contract, similar to what Councilmember Kinnear was saying. So we have that, but currently, we are spending into that, into that savings that we already have. So if that contract comes to fruition, you have to think that that cost, whatever it is, is going to be above and beyond what that number already is. So it's not just saving that, it's, it's talking about the additional cost on top of it, once whatever contract it is finalizes. And, and that total cost of compensation is impacted within the general fund in, in this line item. And again, I don't, I don't want to bore you with all of those numbers. I tried to limit myself on tables like that. So again, here's, here's a table just showing the budget to actual for benefit expense. Benefit expense from my discussions with Jessica Stratton is that Questica, for some reason, didn't capture a component of, of benefits to be budgeted within the benefit line item, but it's being paid through salaries, or it's being paid through the salary line item. It, it really doesn't show, it, it's really not that impactful, because if you combine the two, the, the over-budget numbers together, you're still going to get to that roughly $6.87 million number. From a revenue perspective, and this is kind of what Councilmember Cathcart was asking, I think it's really too early to, to project out retail and use tax. And I know Tanya mentioned this on Monday. We only have two months of data so far for retail, retail and use tax. We're always, we're always getting our collections for retail sales two months back, and that's just kind of how, that's just how the state works. So to say that we have a good idea of what's going to happen for the rest of the year for January, February, I think would be difficult, especially considering what we knew the markets did after, the markets did after the banking kind of fiasco that happened in March. Dr. Jones is meeting with us on June 1st, and he'll have a better outlook of where we're going to end at for the remainder of the year. I think Tanya's projection is currently about $800,000 over budget, meaning we, we will have 800,000 additional in funds from this retail and use tax. There was strong growth from January and February. Hopefully, that, that remains constant, but I, I think it's too early to say on that one. Utility tax, I, I believe Tanya had about $1.8 million. I'm at about, or I'm sorry, not utility tax, BNO taxes, I, I believe she had a, over about 1.8. I'm about $1 million right now, but still a surplus. Those, those are doing really well right now, based primarily because of the, the electric, the eviscerates that went up, and we know that that's, that's impacting that. Inter-fund utility tax, again, likely to, and Tanya mentioned this as well, likely to come in lower than budgeted by approximately $1.2 million. So if you net those together, right, saying that retail and use tax, saying that property tax stays the same, saying that you get a, a, you know, a, a, let's just say, a loss, or just say even on utility and BNO, and you say that everything comes in even on the revenue side, or at least just that's your optimistic or realistic viewpoint right now, is everything's going to come in at budget from the revenue side, your expense side is, is right now coming in just shy of, of $7 million over budget. So that is a $7 million loss that, that you would have to find somewhere if that comes to fruition. Some of the big departments that, that we'd have to look at, and, and we'll talk about this in a second, but where we're seeing where some of the, the numbers are coming from, as we've seen in last year, they were police and fire. So I, I thought it most important to, to look at police and fire and see if that's, that's where these are capturing at. SPD budget to actual, and rightfully so, SPD budget to actual right now at a 9% growth is showing about $7.6 million over budget. So they, they would be able to cannibalize any sort of positive variance within the general fund, so they could, that all the departments that have savings could absorb some of that $7.6 million, which is why we're seeing 6.8 instead of 7.6 in the general fund, is seeing some of the savings from the expenditure side on, on the general fund. That's, that's just, that's, that's their overall budget, but the, the largest contributors, as, as I'm sure everybody knows, is going to be personnel. Right now, we're seeing, like Jessica said, about, about, I think she said about two, I, I don't have the number, I apologize, I don't have the number in front of me, but just over two year-to-date. Right now, for, for the remainder of the year, I could see about $4 million over budget for just their salaries and wages, and then $2.3 million over budget for their benefits. And again, that, that was kind of that Questica blip, from my understanding. So gets us to about 6.3 of the seven, seven-plus million dollar deficit. Some of them are in other line items, but those are the two largest ones. Fire Department, they are looking, as of right now, from what I'm seeing, to be about within budget of what, what they have. Now, this, this is, including a 12% growth from prior year of their expenses, leads to about a, a half a million dollar surplus. It could jump up a little bit more to like a half a million dollar deficit. I'm trying to track the SREC payments that are going out, because they, they increased the, the budget line item. They, they had a decrease in salary and an increase in services, like what we were talking about with human resources, but because the dispatchers went to SREC. Personnel itself would be 10% over budget, and then expenses, about $750 million over budget. So that's really all I have for right now. I can already see your eyes starting to glaze over a little bit. So why don't we talk a little bit about next steps? May 25th, we are going to talk about some possible solutions, some funding solutions that are out there. Not saying anything is, is off the table, but saying, okay, really, where can we pull some of these funds for, from? I know the, the, there's still conversation that if the mayor will be there or not, and/or any of the administration staff, but also talking about homelessness. We, we have yet to talk about homelessness and what that draw is going to be. We know that we have increased costs for the shelter providers that we have right now that are outside of the budget that we have. You know, there's, there's deliberation on what exactly that number is going to be, if we're fully funded, how much more funding we're, we're going to need, and where it's going to come from. So we can talk definitely about that. June 1st, again, Dr. Jones is going to be here. June 8th, we could start talking about police solutions, just like Councilmember Stratton and Kinnear said, of, of having these departments here, seeing if there's a solution to right-size along with fire, because both police and fire, we know, as we're talking about 2023, we also have to talk about capital budgets for both of them, and that goes into 2023 for fire, but into 2024 and beyond for police as well. June 22nd, we're going to talk about that budget ordinance that I, I believe administration is going to be getting to us sometime in the very near future, per the SMC that says, I think it's due by the end of May, to have that recommendation for right, you know, quote-unquote, right-sizing the budget. We're going to start talking to see, you know, what, where exactly we're at on the 22nd. We'll finalize that on the 29th and then vote on it on the 10th of July.
I just want to throw something out, too, because I'm sure lots of staff are listening to this, and I want to make sure they don't feel threatened or panicked or in any way impacted by this. We're all in this together, and we're going to come up with solutions that are the least disruptive to staff. So I'm hopeful that we're all in agreement, that we're going to try to keep this calm, cool, collected, do our work, make sure that we're not turning people's lives upside down while we go through this process.
Agreed.
Absolutely, and I believe the administration's of the same mindset as well.
Matt, at the, the next one, where we're talking about homelessness, I assume track will be a part of that discussion. Are there, or are you able to bring forward kind of what the options would be, not just for this year, but for 2024? What pots of money outside of the general fund we would have? Because I think we got to start thinking about, you know, like criminal justice piece is going to go away, ARPA is going to be gone at some point very soon. So we're more and more limited, which is going to be pushing some of these expenses probably towards the general fund if we don't have anything else. And so I think we have to look at all those different little pots to see what those effects are going to be.
Yeah, definitely. And there's, there's some opportunity out there, but definitely, we'll, we'll look at that. I guess the main question is, is are we comfortable with that schedule?
Yes.
Do we feel like we need to move it around? Do we feel like something needs to be under, something needs to be highlighted that isn't quite there? Do we feel like we want to throw this to the administration's team and say, hey, you know, these, we'd like to have these individuals in attendance? Are we feeling good about that?
It might be a good idea to, you know, send this to the administration and just see where they can plug in their information, folks, and their information on this, so we're in this together.
Yeah.
And I, I would say, I mean, they, they weren't here today necessarily, so if they could be willing to, to review what, what you shared, and if they have a difference of opinion, I would love to see it and kind of understand, you know, the, the hows and whys, because I think that would help. You know, it's like I, I say all the time, we need to get on the same fact sheet.
Right.
So we, you know, we might have a different direction, but if we can work off the same fact sheet, then, you know, I think we can come together.
And I think that's why we wanted to have that original March 30th one that, that we had planned, was to say, you know, shoulder to shoulder, yes, but this is what I'm seeing, yes, but this is what I'm seeing, so that we could have at least, even if it's an agree to disagree, both understanding why we're, we're agreeing to disagree and how we've gotten to those numbers. And I'm happy to share any of the data that, that I need to, to, to get there.
I was just going to say, we are, Budget Work Group's going to meet with the administration, I think, early next week, mostly to talk about homelessness, and then we can talk about the bigger schedule and see what their willingness is, is to come to these meetings. We've, there's been some peace about not doing the meetings in public, which, of course, we're used to doing it, that seems how we, so we, we have to kind of work out that dance. But also on that, in term, to your point about into 2024, there's two things. One, we're looking at potentially doing an RFP, which you've been pushing for, maybe releasing as soon as July 1. But the idea is to make sure, if we're going to make everyone go through that process, that we have funding identified through April of '25, so the end of that winter, so that we know. So to your point, just, really just for track, actually, but just so that we can be confident about it. So just, it's taking your 2024 and adding four months onto it for exactly that purpose. So, and that, I just want to say, that's a joint administration council endeavor that we're looking, that that's a good, good idea. So we have some alignment on that. Now, how do we, the details of that funding, that's, we'll have to see.
And I, yeah, and I think that's going to be, I mean, something that we need to be conscious of as we're making all of these decisions is, is, and I know it's been said many times, but the sustainable solution of what we're doing here, because we can easily go into the savings account as we, as we've shown before, but it's, it's making sure that we're matching those budget principles of matching ongoing expenditures with ongoing revenues. And that's something that we really need to, to hit. To your point, Councilmember Cathcart, I, I think exploring outside of the box of the general fund, because really, the general fund doesn't have the capacity to take this. You know, it, it barely has the capacity to take the expenditures that we have as it is. So to add, you know, an influx of, you know, an eight-figure number is going to make it very, very difficult and, and shrink everybody's belt a little bit. So I think we need to do that when we're, when we're making those decisions, as well as capital decisions, when we're talking about police and fire capital. I mean, we've got police that has had, that, that we've done purchases for, for vehicles for '22 and '23, but we don't have anything for fire for 2023. And we know how much those rigs cost when they go offline, and they are not cheap. So if we have two rigs that go offline, that could be... So if we have two rigs that go offline, that could be easily upwards of $4 million in a blink of an eye, and we don't have the funds for that in this current, this current, yeah.
Well, and to that point, you know, we've got a study coming back that's going to look at, you know, the siting of fire facilities, and that could necessitate, you know, some capital investments on that end, and that would potentially help our operating budget as well, but we got to have the funds to do it.
Right, right. Yeah, I think, in my discussions with Matrix, I think they, that that study probably won't be available for, until after the 2024 budget is done. But I think we can probably call Preston, Matrix, and say, you know, let's get status updates, let's get more regular status updates. I think they've been on the public safety agenda a couple of times, and there was just kind of some confusion of what exactly they were going to be presenting. I know it was in its infancy, meaning the study itself was in its infancy, but now as things are getting more fleshed out, we can get some high-level ideas at least.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank Matt. I know he's been in the crosshairs. Mr. Bad News, Good News kind of guy. You know, something we haven't talked about, as we learn more about our budget, will we need to go to the ballot for levy funding? And I know that's not what people want to hear, and that's on a lot of people's mind, but until we know what we don't know, we won't be able to make an informed decision of how we move forward with funding the needs of the city.
All right, thanks, everyone. Oh, wait, excuse me.
Sorry. I just wanted to take a minute. This is likely my last meeting with you all, and so I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you, especially to Council President, who brought me on seven years ago, and I've learned so much from all of you and truly enjoyed working with all of you, and I've really appreciated all of the support you've given me, especially the last six months. So I just wanted to say that and...
I'm going to cry.
I know, me too.
As you can tell, I'm a little emotional, but it's all good.
Going to clap and stit.
It's all good.
And as you might have noticed, I'm still in denial that this is our last meeting. I'm not really accepting that yet, but I will assure you that regardless of whether I drag her to another meeting, at some point, we will have an appropriate time to acknowledge. But thank you. In the short term, it goes really without saying that you are the glue that have kept us all together through the most challenging of times.
And I have your home number.
You sure do.
So do I. Use it sparingly.
All right, with, did you have one last thing, a thought?
I'm just going to grab you after.
Okay, all right. All right, well, with that, we're adjourned, and we'll see folks on Monday for briefing, for committee briefing and legislative session.